Kind of stunned me a little bit with the YouTube.
Okay, we'll call to order the Moore City Council meeting for August 19th, 2024. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Rob Clark?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here. Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I'd like to ask Elizabeth Whiteman to come forward as we'd like to present her with a certificate. And I just have a few things to say, and then I'll come down there and hand this to you. So Elizabeth has been working on becoming a certified floodplain manager, which is not an easy task. I know that it's taken a while to do this, and there's lots of certifications and tests, and it ends with a two-hour final that you have to have some show that you are competent in floodplain management. And she has successfully completed all of that. And so now on our staff, we have a, as they say in the letter, a person who knows their stuff when it comes to floodplain management. So let me present this to you on behalf of the.
Everybody. There's no easy way to do all of this.
And they'll just stand up a picture real quick.
That's great.
Thank you. We appreciate all of your hard work for the city of Moore.
Then item two is the consent docket, motion to approve the consent docket, items A through F. We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item three is consider adoption of ordinance number 105524 of the City of Moore, Oklahoma, amending the City of Moore, Oklahoma's sales tax ordinance, ordinance number 60, as amended by ordinance number 33183, as amended by ordinance number 47088, as amended by ordinance number 55106, as amended by ordinance number 67710, as amended by ordinance number 72512, as amended by ordinance number 82916, as amended by ordinance number 94920, to provide for the renewing of the levying and assessing of an existing one-fourth of a percent sales tax upon the gross receipts and proceeds derived from all sales taxable under the sales tax law of Oklahoma, fixing effective date of the date of termination, providing for the purpose of said additional sales tax, making provisions severable and containing other provisions related thereto.
Mayor and council, this is the renewal of the quarter cent sales tax, and it's up for its four-year cycle. Again, this is a renewal of an existing tax. It's not an increase. If the council approves to put this on the ballot and approved by the voters, it would take effect next April 1st of 2025 and then run for four years. The proposal is 75% of the proceeds will be for our park system, and 25% would be for public works. The current breakdown is 50/50, so with this next cycle, more of it would be for parks. Our bond counsel and financial advisor are here to answer any questions. Again, items three and four are companion items, recommend approval.
So when are we anticipating this would go to the voters?
November.
November, okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item four is consider adoption of resolution number 9324, authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of said city the question of authorizing the extension of an existing one-fourth of 1% sales tax and providing the use thereof containing other provisions relating thereto.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, and you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item five is consider adoption of resolution number 9424, authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city the question of issuance of general obligation bonds of said city in the amount not to exceed the sum of $6,700,000 to provide funds for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, improving, or repairing streets or bridges in said city, with all of said improvements to be owned exclusively by said city and levying and collecting an annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon the taxable property in said city for payment of the interest and principal on said bonds.
Mayor and council, this is a project on Telephone Road, south of southwest 34th to the city limits. The design for this project has been going on for some time. It's also in, we have the same design engineer that the City of Norman has. And so even though the design has been going on for quite some time, it really wasn't scheduled to be put on the ballot this year for construction funding until we had a meeting with the Turnpike Authority approximately a month ago. The Turnpike Authority explained their project and their timeframe and some east-west connectors that they're going to be building and operational by 2027, is what they told us. They were familiar with our project and the City of Norman's project, and their design is to have a lot of traffic exit and enter at southwest, or northwest 36th and Indian Hills Road, and a lot of that traffic, we think, would come north into Moore. And so their recommendation was that we should go ahead and try and widen the street before they get their east-west connectors done. So that's the reason that this is moved up in the order of project funding. So given the information that we have received from the Turnpike Authority, recommend approval.
And this would still keep our mills at 16 or below?
Oh, yes, we will still manage the funding to where we will not exceed the 16 and a half millage rate.
Perfect, thank you.
So will this include the intersection at 36th and Indian Hills? Will this redo that intersection also?
Yes, but this is just for the Moore part of the project.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it, but that'll be the Norman part.
Yeah, that'll be the Norman part, yes.
They will do it.
Okay, yes, very good.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Do you have an idea of when they plan to start the Turnpike Authority on that?
I'm not exactly sure what the start date is, but they said it would be operational by the end of 2027. So they've given us advance notice.
Going to be quick.
Okay, we have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item six is consider authorizing the execution of special election proclamation and notice pertaining to the proposed general obligation bond issue.
Mayor and council, this is the companion item number five.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You call the vote?
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item seven is consider adoption of employment agreements with Chris Gander of BOK Financial Securities, Inc. as financial advisor and Terry L. Hawkins of Phillips Mura, PC as bond counsel in regard to proposed general obligation bond issue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item eight is consider receiving applications to fill the vacant Ward III seat from 8:00 a.m. on August 20th, '24 until 5:00 p.m. on August 30th, 2024.
Mayor and council, this just starts the process to fill the vacant Ward III seat, recommend approval.
And could you just brief us briefly on the, after we receive, after closing time, we'll have the applicants, and those will be?
We'll have the applications, and then the plan is for the council to meet an executive session on September 3rd to review the applications and take whatever action you desire at that time.
So we could either appoint somebody, or we could delay that until maybe we want to call some of these people?
Sure, I mean, if you have, if there's a, you want to go ahead and make a decision, you certainly can. If you want to interview a couple of the candidates, you can certainly do that, so.
And so then the normal cycle for this seat, so this will have to, this is that whole new thing where they'll have to?
So that, that seat is up at the end of this year?
Oh, it is up, okay. At the end of this year? Okay, cool. So that makes this one not painful?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, as it turns out, whoever's selected for this seat will need to file to run again this December.
Just in the normal cycle, okay, very good.
Okay, need a motion and a second? Or did we have that already? Nope, we haven't.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item nine is consider approval of resolution number 8724, programming the reconstruction of the South Sunny Lane Bridge, being south of southeast 34th Street and north of Moore City Limits as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
Mayor and council, items number nine through 14 on your agenda are companion items. They are all resolutions for some ACOG grant funding that's 80/20 match. And each of these projects will need to have specific elements included in order for the projects to score higher. These projects are scored, and you're competing against all the other communities in the central Oklahoma area.
Which way is the 80/20?
They will, the federal funds will provide 80%, and we provide a 20% match.
Very good, thank you.
The first item on the agenda is for the reconstruction of the South Sunny Lane Bridge that is south of southeast 34th Street and north of the Moore City Limits. This is over the North Fork of the Little River. The total cost for this project is estimated at $2,997,101. The 80% federal funds that would be provided would be $1,677,680. And the 20% match would be $419,421. This particular project would reconstruct the bridge. It would include a 10-foot multi-use trail, and albeit some very small streetscape elements and some stormwater quality improvements in the project.
So this would be a full replacement?
Yes.
Tear it out?
Yes.
Okay. Would, would, well, would reconstruct it as a four lane? Right now it's two. Do you, or do you know that?
Yes, so we will be applying to get the added, you know, lane area. On the application, it will have to say a two lane, I believe. But I will look into that, but the intent is to have the four lane.
Construct it to?
Right, mhm.
Whether we do that?
Well, we might just go ahead and stripe it off for right now because the traffic counts don't.
Okay.
Account for the four lanes, but the intent is to have the four lanes, yes.
Is this the same bridge that we've had concerns over pedestrians?
Yes.
Will that be addressed when this is rebuilt?
10-foot, 10-foot?
10-foot wide.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Is that on each side?
My understanding is it's on one side, it's on the west side, which would be the school side.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You can call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item 11 is consider approval of resolution number 8924, programming the reconstruction of Northeastern Avenue from Northeast 12th Street to Northeast 27th Street as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
Did we skip 10? Mayor, did you skip item 10?
10. Oh, did I? Yeah, sorry. Okay, it can say almost the same thing, but it is different. Consider approval of resolution number 8824, programming the realignment and widening of Southwest 19th Street and South Broadway Avenue intersection as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
Mayor and council, this is the realignment of the intersection of Southwest 19th Street and South Broadway slash Turner, I'm sorry, Tower Drive intersection. This intersection will realign Broadway to come in at a right angle and line up with Tower Drive. And it would also include the closure of Linda Lane to help with traffic flow in that area. The project also includes a streetscape, a multi-use trail, and stormwater quality improvements. The total estimated cost is $6,679,995. The 80% match would be $4,854,396. And the 20% match that the city is responsible for would be $1.2 million. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So do we already have any of this on a bond, or will this all be future bonds?
The, this part, the design has been approved.
Design has, but not the construction money?
Right.
So we'll have, more than likely, we'll do a bond down the road somewhere, okay.
Okay, we just need a motion, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item 11 is consider resolution number 8924, programming the reconstruction of Northeastern Avenue from Northeast 12th Street to Northeast 27th Street as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
This project is a reconstruction project because ACOG will only pay for the four lanes or the existing footprint of the current street. Any widening would be the city's cost up above the grant, but we are planning on widening this to five lanes. The grant is just for four. The project does include a multi-use trail, streetscaping, and stormwater quality improvements. The total for this project is estimated at $14,550,560. The 80% match that the federal government would provide would be $11,640,448. Sorry. And the 20% match would be $2,910,012. I'm sorry. I'm getting.
Make a motion to approve?
I've been trying to get sidewalks from northeast 12th to 27th Street for nine years, so this excites me a lot.
Yeah, this is great.
A second.
Yes, I'm glad we're going to do five lanes.
This one's just going to be on 27th, so.
Oh, from northeast?
No, this is eastern.
This is eastern, okay, this is eastern, sorry. Yeah, sorry, too many projects.
Did we get a second? We got, okay, you call the vote?
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries.
This one's 27th.
Okay. Item 12 is consider approval of resolution number 9024, programming the reconstruction of Northeast 27th Street from I-35 to Northeastern Avenue as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
Mayor and council, this is another application for the reconstruction of the existing footprint. Currently, it is, in most areas, four lanes. We would be adding left turn bays at the pole road intersection, so those left turners would be out of the main line of traffic. We would be adding in a streetscape, a 10-foot multi-use trail, and stormwater quality improvements. The total for this project is $12,149,858. The 80% match is $9.7 million, and the 20% match the city would be responsible for would be $2,429,971.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
So one quick question back on the 11. Five lanes, we're, we'll bid it for four, we're planning to put in five. Is the five the full length, the full mile, or is it just going to do it at intersections?
Yes, my understanding is for the full mile.
Full mile, okay, thank you.
Item 13, consider approval of resolution number 9124, programming the reconstruction of Northwest 27th Street from Hillcrest Avenue to I-35 as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
This project is also a reconstruction. We will be putting in four lanes or the existing footprint, although in the area of the QuickTrip and E-Express, we might actually be pulling that in just a bit. It's quite wide there, but we would make sure that all of the adequate lanes for traffic are accounted for. But we would make sure that all of the adequate lanes for traffic are accounted for. We would also be including left turn bays at Woodlawn and Poplar that would take those left turn movements out of the main line of traffic. This project does include a streetscape, a 10-foot multi-use trail, and stormwater quality improvements. The total for this project is $5,861,125. The 80% federal, federal participation would be $4.6 million and the 20% local match would be $1,172,225.
Is Hillcrest Avenue, is it like halfway between the highway and what, Shields?
It is one block from Shields, so it is the furthest west street of Oklahoma.
There's another project that's gonna do the aprons at that intersection, this will tie into those new aprons, yeah.
And I, I just have a quick question. If we, we're not doing five lanes because it would expand the existing footprint, would that require relocating utilities, I mean, I, I, or is it just a cost?
It's, it's neither of those, it's an ACOG oddity. So, in the long-range plan for ACOG, at the time it was produced, we had not envisioned having our arterial roads as five lanes, we had envisioned them as being four lanes. So, that's what we put down as the maximum build-out was four lanes, and so that's all they, they will, that, that's all they will accept. We would have to do a planned amendment, which I've asked to get that started moving forward so we can begin to apply for the real widening that we will be doing.
But for this grant applications, it'll just be money for the four lane if we're gonna replace it as four, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Just a motion and a second? I'll make a motion, that we approve.
Second that.
We've had a motion and a second, would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Bring us to item 14, is consider approval of resolution number 9224, programming the construction of a six-foot sidewalk along South Sunny Lane from Southeast 38th Street to Southeast 34th Street as a surface transportation program urbanized area project.
Mayor and council, this would include a walkway to Timber Creek Elementary on the west side of Sunny Lane. This does include a significant pedestrian bridge which would span over the North Fork of the Little River. This does include very limited streetscape elements and stormwater quality improvements. The total for this project is estimated at $1,474,316. The 80% federal funding would be $1.17 million. The 20% local match would be $294,862.
Good deal.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Melissa.
Item 15 is consider the budgeted purchase of a 2025 E1 custom fire engine in the amount of $842,801 from Banner Fire Equipment utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 113021-RVG-1.
Yes, mayor and council, this is a budgeted item, as you said. This 2025 E1 fire engine is expected to be done in December of 2025. It will be replacing our current Engine 3, which is a 2015 model, which has about 97,000 miles on it now, so by the time this comes in, it'll be 10 and a half years old with about 110,000 miles on it. Right now, these trucks are about a three-year build time for fire engines, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, one of the questions I asked him before the meeting, just in casual conversation, is by doing this now, we lock in the price and we don't have years' worth of price changing on us, so. Good.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Will you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item 16 is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of six sets of Morning Pride Structural firefighting bunker gear for fire recruits from municipal emergency services in the amount of $23,111.16 utilizing Sourcewell Contract Number 1 or 010424.
Yes, mayor and council, this is six sets of gear for our new recruits that started last Monday, so they all get sized and measured for their specific fit, and this gear will last them about 10 years.
Wow.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have had a motion and a second, you can call the vote, please.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. At this time, we're gonna recess the city council meeting, oh, did I forget?
16.1.
Oh, I guess I missed that email. An amendment to the agenda, maybe I didn't miss it, I just forgot. 16.1 is consider approval of the FY 2324 Budget Supplement to Special Revenue Fund 8 to budget funds received from the Cleveland County Justice Authority, excess mental health reimbursements, grant funds, and prior year collections to the half-cent dedicated sales tax fund, Fund 12, and the quarter-cent dedicated sales tax fund, Fund 13, to budgeted additional sales tax collections in the current and previous years.
Mayor and council, you have a budget amendment in front of you to include some additional revenues that were collected during the course of fiscal '24. Our fire chief did a great job soliciting funds from the Cleveland County Justice Authority to allow us to make several purchases. We collected more than we anticipated in several other areas, including the quarter-cent and half-cent sales tax. This is simply a budget amendment, allows us to put that into the budget for those collections that had already been received.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Will you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Now, we're gonna recess the city council meeting and convene a Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 17 is the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket, items A and B.
Second.
You call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. We will now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 18 is the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve items A and B?
Second. Will you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. At this time, we're gonna recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Rob Clark?
Here.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Item 20 is the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket, A.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item 21 is new business, Citizens Forum for Items Not on the Agenda. I had one person sign up, but it was contingent, is there anybody here that wants to speak about anything? No, okay, then this person didn't want to talk. Oh, you do want to talk? Well, come on up here, this is, yeah, Jordan, is it Hodgson? Hodgson, I'm sorry. If you just give your name and address and you'll have five minutes.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council, I'm Jordan Hodgson at 126 Platt Lane. I'm here to follow up from my last visit where we mentioned starting a petition, for those in favor, having backyard hens. I did begin that petition today, for those in favor, at 2:00 p.m., and the latest numbers I saw were 184 signatures in support of hens. I just want to encourage you guys to consider this, and I also would encourage those not in support to also start a petition so that we can base this on the actual community voices instead of the preferences of the council. I'd also like to end by encouraging city officials who are writing the ordinance to consider a permit system with an education requirement to ease the fears of those who are opposed. You can look to Edmund for what that entails. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I would just say that city staff is working on this and they're meeting with city council, so we hope to have something to present. I can't promise you a date, but hopefully soon for consideration. Just keep watching the website for the city agendas and it'll be posted there. Item B, city council trustees, anybody have anything? Oh, sorry. We had the opportunity to attend a luncheon sponsored by the South Side Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, Moore Chamber of Commerce, and the Norman Chamber, Chamber of Commerce with Governor Stitt, and had all the good things to say promoting the state, trying to make us an even more business-friendly state, so appreciated that. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Mitchell?
Nothing at this time.
Well, okay, that's always a bummer.
Mark's trying to think of something else to say.
Maybe I should move on. Item 22, executive session. Section 307, Title 25, Oklahoma statutes permits the body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of our city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. A, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim filed by Julian Mashur, Mashun, on behalf of Amanda Bedard against the city of Moore, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute 307b4.
Make a motion, we convene to executive session.
Second.
Will you call the roll?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, we will be in executive session. Okay, we are going to convene, reconvene from executive session, just let the record show that everybody that was present is still present. And item D, what is the action?
Make a motion to proceed as directed.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second, would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. And now we'll make a motion to adjourn, so moved, yeah, adjourn.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, we adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.